Good evening and welcome to the Champaign City Council Meeting. Our study session for Tuesday, November 26, 2019. I know that Councilmember Mckyles is still at the Community Violence Forum, and I believe that Councilmember Foreman may be with him there as well. So I expect that they will be coming in in a little bit. With that, I don't know, Deputy City Manager, are you introducing him? Or am I turning it right over to Jane and Rob?
You can turn it right over to them.
Thank you and good evening. Joined at the table tonight by Jane Deluce, who you all know, President and CEO of Visit Champaign County. This is the annual presentation of their activities, what has been accomplished last year and what's to come. I also want to recognize folks that are in the audience from Visit Champaign County Board. Board Chair Laura Blile, right behind me, along with future City Councilmember Sarah Blile accompanying her. Nathan Eshu from Hamilton Walkers here in downtown Champaign, and Dennis Robertson from Marketplace The Mall, as he always says, are here tonight as well in support of Visit Champaign County. I don't think I missed anybody, right? Okay. Just a couple reminders about our role with Visit Champaign County. We have an Agreement for Services. We call those Economic Development Services with VCC. We have currently in a three-year agreement that ends June 30, 2022. So we're in our first year of that three-year agreement. So that's not up for renewal right now, but this is the annual presentation. We have, if you will, four places on the Board of Directors. I serve on the Board as Treasurer. Councilmember Brick serves on the Board on behalf of Council. And then we have two community members, Dennis, who's in the audience, and Shayla Matuka from Matuka &amp; Dodd. So that's kind of the city's representation, if you will. I'll stop there, and I will hand it over to Jane to lead us through the presentation tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for a few minutes to talk about how VCC promotes Champaign as a destination to visit, work, and live. You have in front of you the annual report, and you also have it as part of your packet. So this one's the brochure copy of it. You also receive quarterly reports. So instead of going through a lot of the data, I thought tonight we would just focus on a few highlights. So this year, we unveiled the rebranded guide. So instead of a visitor's guide, this is an experience guide. And we also have a brand-new website, both with residents in mind. As you can tell, if you have visited the new website, it focuses more on stories. It's got a priority on blogs. And what we're most excited about, and I'll talk about in a little bit, is a new live-work section. In our social media reach, there's quite a few avenues by how we reach people. Facebook followers are up. We do daily posts on events, businesses, and individuals. We do live videos, as we did for the Champaign Farmers Market. But hopefully, you've all seen Terry's Tuesday Trails, which is Terry Reeves, our VP of Marketing and Community Engagement. And she is picking, or actually, Facebook followers are picking where she will run each Tuesday. And so from that, she has gone out and filmed a video, and then had a lot of people comment on where she should run next. We're going to see how it goes as the weather continues into the winter months. And then also, oh, I wanted to also point out, our most popular Instagram post this year was Farron's New Location. Everybody wanted to know about Farron's New Location. And part of what we've done this year is we've created outside-of-ordinary maker videos. And so I want to show you a quick one that we created.
I came down here in 1999 from Chicago, and I absolutely loved it. For me, growing up in Chicago, we always had family. And then with family, you always have good food. Whenever we had gatherings or family get-togethers, it's always a time when we barbecue. We did a lot of soul food cooking. Barbecue didn't really come to me until like 2014, when I thought that this is something I can do. So I had to kind of nod to my sister and say, "Look, I think we can do this. Let's build this together. Let's work hard." The most constant part of my upbringing has been my sister. So where she went, I went. Where we struggled, we struggled together. And most of our successes, we celebrated together. So just like this, when we opened up, we was here together.
I like to eat. So I figured if I put my own flavors, I like to give the people what I eat. And it's cooked with love.
Our menu is very fluid, a lot of passion. Every case of tips we get comes in from Chicago. So that process starts as soon as it gets delivered. We thaw it, we season it, we let it. The seasoning is ingratiated to the meat. We smoke it, we barbecue it, and then we add our signature sauce, that Carolina vinegar-based barbecue sauce. We took that, and then we kind of put our own little twist on it. And that's how we get our signature sauce. But it's top-flight secret. The community has really, really validated what we plan to do. I had a seven-year plan, like when we started. And within three years, we kind of shattered all of that. And it's no accident that the community supports us every day. We're putting our hands into more pots that I never thought was possible at this early of a stage. We want to take our food to central Illinois. And the best way to do that is put yourself in situations where they can see you, smell you, and enjoy it.
So speaking of food, Restaurant Week has become extremely popular. This last year, we had 31 total participating restaurants, 18 in Champaign. You can see the stats there, both from what people had over the campaign itself and on the very first day, the views of over 10,000 page views on the first day of Restaurant Week. My favorite quote on that is Amin from Pizzeria Antica, when he said, "This event, it saves our January." Switching gears to meetings and conferences. I've just listed a few here. Our role with all of these meetings and conferences, sometimes people say they'll come regardless of VCC, and that isn't the case. Sometimes we are the ones that bring it directly here. We've met with the meeting planner. We've created the winning bid for it to happen. We may book hotel room blocks. We might work with them on group entertainment and dining or transportation. We've worked registration at conferences. Or we've provided guides and visitor guides and bags as well. So these are some of the ones that have happened currently in this past fall. And then these are a couple that are coming up in 2020.
It's an awesome networking event for us. It's really about building relationships and networking with folks from all across the state. I'm involved with business development. So it's all about networking and where can we find our next great new complex to have our tournaments at?
I've got to spend a lot of quality time with each of the different people that are interested in hosting curling.
It's been a great and enjoyable experience. As a rights holder, getting to meet all of the CVBs and event planners here, just trying to make connections. All of the tours and facilities and events that we've enjoyed throughout the day and a half here have been really great for us.
So that event was the Sports Illinois Huddle. It is a statewide effort that brings sports tournaments to Illinois. And we got to host that right here in Champaign in May. And hopefully, you recognized a lot of the sites that were in there. It gave us a chance to showcase a lot of our facilities. It did include other CVBs from around the state and included sport planners from around the country that were right here in our backyard, looking at our area. Particular one, if you saw the testimonial, was the gentleman from U.S. Curling, which has a lot of interest in the Yards Project. And now, we're very excited to announce. We found out yesterday that we are going to be bringing in the 2021 Upper Midwest CVB Conference. This event includes eight states. There will be participants coming from all over Illinois, Iowa. You can read the ones there. Illinois, Iowa, Minnesota, Missouri, Nebraska, North Dakota, South Dakota, and Wisconsin. This is the first time they've done it in this location, obviously. It is, we competed with other cities in Illinois, and we competed with other cities in Wisconsin. So this is a huge boost for us to be able to host this event here. And we're very excited to be able to have it. It will be in September of 2021. We anticipate between 200 and 250 attendees from all of those different states. And we have an opportunity to showcase our community.
Did you go back?
Yeah. Okay. So now, as you're looking at, we have talent development. And we're very excited about this collaboration, working with the EDC. It's great to have Carly McCrory here from the EDC. You're Welcome CU and the University of Illinois. This is an opportunity for our organizations to collaborate with fellow HR professionals that are in the area to bring them the talent development. And it's looking at opportunities for recruitment of those professionals and saying the same message to all of those folks when they're coming here, because every visitor is a potential resident. As you can see in the middle, and you also have in your packet, that is a quarterly checklist that was designed, and that will be included with all new hires. So new hires of these HR professionals, if they request it either electronically or print copies. This, I think, is a very important aspect of what our organization does, what EDC does, what the You're Welcome CU program is all about, and the opportunity to work closely with the university, with Carl, with Christie, and with other major employers in this area. And hopefully, you've seen the announcement. This one, this is great. I mean, look at Chambana Proud. Here's the opportunity to get not only five, there's a sixth one that was added today. So you can get six new t-shirts. That is a way to foster community pride in Champaign-Urbana. And for all the women, if you do like a women's cut, that was added today. So just so you know, when you go online, you can have a women's cut of these t-shirts. But it's a great way for people to show our Chambana pride. We've already talked to a lot of people about how they might give them as holiday gifts. We've talked to the opportunity to be able to put in local shops. We get often asked in our office, and I know Carly gets asked in her office too, where can we get Champaign-Urbana merchandise? And this is it. And I think it's, what's also a collaboration is with 40 North, because these were local artists that designed all of these t-shirts. So it's online, it's through WiseCamp. We can, we'll send you the link after this presentation. So you'll have the opportunity to do a little bit of early holiday shopping, hopefully for your t-shirts. So moving into our strategic plan, that was a lot of the highlights. Destination 2023. So we had input that was invited from all of you, also along with other stakeholders, business owners. We did a series of surveys, focus groups. We did a board retreat this past summer. And our goals were broken down into three areas: infrastructure, destination experience, and the organization itself. What you have in your packet are the new mission, the new vision, the goals, and the objectives. What we will seek further input on and continue to work on is our tactics, which will be included in our annual work plan that will come out now that we've had the strategic plan approved. So... So in the area of infrastructure, talking about enhancing the community as a destination. We want to advocate for destination-defining development and activities. I'll talk about that in a second. Initiatives to advance region sports and outdoor recreational assets, and to collaboratively advocate for enhanced transportation assets and wayfinding signage. In the area of facility development, the Yards Project, the Downtown Plaza, the Martin Center, the Kikapoo Rail Trail Expansion, and the new Rantoul Sports Complex, which I hope everybody here can appreciate. While that's being built in Rantoul, the impact of what that will have on Champaign is unbelievable. We have the hotels and restaurants that will support the tournaments and opportunities that happen at the Rantoul Sports Complex. And then yesterday, the groundbreaking for the expanded Illinois Conference Center next to the iHotel and Conference Center, additional 32,500 square feet of meeting space, opening fall 2020. What this allows us the opportunity for that we haven't had to this point is to go after larger conferences and events that we've had to turn away or we haven't even sought out to begin with. And then our favorite topic is advocacy, not only for Willard Airport, which you'll hear from Tim here shortly, but also for Amtrak. When I talked about that conference that are bringing in people from eight states, a lot of those people are going to be flying. So increased air service and having that opportunity for those people to get here by air is going to be extremely important, not only for that conference, but other conferences and events that we bring in. And then Amtrak, for those that heard about, the rail summit that happened this past week, both with on-time, talking about on-time performance and increased rail lines. The second area, destination experience, is about strengthening our visitor and resident experiences. We want to foster and maintain an inclusive culture of hospitality as a defining aspect of this community, to be family-friendly, to support the expansion of the festival and event culture, and to enhance and promote a destination calendar of events that benefits both residents and visitors. I included this one with Cream of the Crop, because what is very important is we can build all these facilities and attractions, but we have to have people who engage and who create optimal experiences when they're here. This is a monthly award that we do, Cream of the Crop. It is to a member of the service industry. It's nominated by the public. And it's been a lot of fun being able to take different people and be able to award them for their service and what an outstanding, outside-of-ordinary service, I should say, to people that come in. And a very important group, in terms of anything we do, are our own residents. We want to look at training our residents. We want them to appreciate the community, and we want them to live outside of ordinary. These are photos that were taken from our residents and visitors, people that were out, that were trying something different that they hadn't been to before. We want them to be our best brand ambassadors. We want to be able to celebrate our greatest Midwest food town recognition, and we want people to be very proud of being from this area. In developing a festival and events culture, we look at trying to develop a festival and events council, which will help leverage resources, sync calendars, and educate a lot of those festival organizers on grant opportunities and other ways to fund their events. And then speaking of events, our goal is not necessarily to create our own events, but to facilitate outside events, like the Hot Rod Power Tour, which is returning here for the fourth time this summer. It's returning here, they don't return to other places. I hope people here appreciate the fact, the reason they're coming back here is the experience that they've had time and time again. They've had a great facility where they hosted at the State Farm Center. They have a great downtown street fest to be able to highlight all of the cars. It's an opportunity for us, and this happens because of VCC. This event just doesn't magically appear on our streets. We go after this event, and we go after it hard. They know us well. We've gone through three different event managers in the course of the last seven years that we've been talking with them with this event. And the impact of it economically is very real. I wanted to bring, just highlight two quick countywide events that impact Champaign. Hey, Punkin Chunkin', up in Rantoul. Let's do it. Let's notice it. It is the New World Championship. This is a great use of the Rantoul Aviation Center. It just happened in November. Their goal is to make that the new home. It was in Delaware. When this event happens, it impacts Champaign. Those people are staying in Champaign. They're eating in Champaign. They're filling up their cars. So opportunity to understand and appreciate countywide events. The second one on the right, the Illinois Triathlon Championships at Lake of the Woods. That's a three-year contract. We've hosted it twice. And while they swim, bike, and run in Mohammed, they will often stay in our area. So important to understand how it is that we have those countywide events that impact this area. And then, of course, the basketball bid. I'll only say that let's bring it home. You've already talked about the basketball bid. Thank you for your support in that bid process. It is a collaborative effort between VCC, U of I, athletics, private and public partners. And I think what I'd like to say on this particular one is the bid efforts are collaborative, and we play a big role in bringing that together. It isn't just magically happening. And I know I keep saying that. But I think a lot of times, people underestimate the value of having all of these groups come together and who are the people that are facilitating that action happening. And then our third area is destination organization. Having VCC be embraced as a community shared value. Building stronger partnerships with our other community organizations that share common goals. Advising local government officials on issues that relate to what we do. And important for some of you on council, increase and diversify VCC funding model for promoting this community as a destination to live, work, and visit. So here's the breakdown. This is an increase in Illinois tourism grants. Those amounts have increased because of two things. One, we have a growing tourism economy in Champaign. Two, we work really hard. So the importance of what the grants are at the level that we are getting those is important to be recognized. And I think what's equally important is to understand, all of the state tourism grants we received have to be matched on a local basis. So the importance of local funding is extreme in what we need to do to be able to continue utilizing those state tourism grants. I recognize that there is perceived inequity in terms of some of the funding that comes through. And I can tell you that we've had great success in increasing our private funding. And we have a two- to four-year plan in increasing our public funding. And that's not just with the city of Urbana. It's also with the county. It can be with Rantoul and other public partners. And then I highlighted the community partnerships, our partnership with 40 North operationally, programmatically, with CCP on the kiosk and maps, the billboards that we do through Adams, the bus boards and terminal welcome centers, MTD also at the airport as well. And then our mobile visitor center, which is a partnership with Honda. And then a fun one that we did with Cranert Center, which was promoting El Nora through decorated guitars. So in closing, I want to thank Angie, Rob, Shayla, and Dennis, who represent the city on our board. I wanted to say that we are leaders. We're connectors, and we're supporters. And while all these efforts may not break down financially, the impact of our efforts are real, and they make this community a better place to live. Thank you.
One final note I wanted to make on the presentation. I didn't expect Jane to mention this, but I believe this month, she celebrated her 10th year as President and CEO of the organization. And for a local nonprofit to have the consistent leadership for 10 years, I think is quite remarkable. And I, speaking on behalf of the board, I guess, we're very appreciative of the work of their staff, not just Jane, but also Terry, Caitlin, Taylor, and Jen.
Brooke.
And Brooke. Thank you. I knew there was...
And soon to be replaced by Ryan.
And they make our jobs easier, and it's a very collaborative and great working board. And it's a pleasure to be able to serve on it.
And Dennis is nodding yes in the back.
And we'll turn it over for questions.
Any technical questions? Councilmember Bruno.
I actually would like to direct a question to Dennis Robertson. But Dennis, I'm going to ask you to come up to the microphone.
Okay, you're not allowed to do that.
I'm not?
There's nobody hearing. It's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So I'll let you.
It's actually a technical question. The reason I'm directing it to him is because I think he's a subject matter expert.
Yes, how can I help you? Oh, you want me to get up there?
No, just on the microphone. Because if you yelled from the back row, I would be able to hear you. We'd be able to hear you. But nobody at home could hear you. Of the different types of events that the VCC brings to Champaign County, different types of tourists and travelers, which ones do you notice at a place like Marketplace Mall have the most direct impact on retail purchasing? Is there a type of audience that we bring to Champaign County that has a noticeable impact on retail sales at a place like Marketplace Mall?
I'd say the events that we see the most impact from are family and teen events. Excuse me, anytime families are traveling together, they're bringing their kids with. For sporting events, there's often downtime in between games. Or they're here overnight for accommodations. They're looking for things to do. Bit of a plug, shopping is the number-one tourist activity that there really is. Everybody goes someplace on an event, and they shop while they're gone. So I'd say that's the type of event that we see the most impact from.
That's all I wanted from you, Dennis. I had a question I thought you could answer.
Can I go sit down now?
You can.
Okay. Any other questions while I'm here? Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other technical questions? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this issue? Seeing none, council comments? Councilmember Mckyles?
Thank you, Jane, for the, well, staff, Jane, for the work. Shouldn't I be formal? The work that you've done. And one of the things that I really, 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 really liked, I don't know, I apologize for being late. We were at a community forum. But the thing that I really valued was not only the things that you talked about, according, as it pertains to tourism, as it pertains to bringing people on the outside, but how do we look at the everyday resident as a person or people that can visit restaurants? I also liked in your, I don't know if you talked about it, but in the thought process of how many places around the city you really have to visit. Of course, in the beginning, I used to always say downtown, downtown, downtown. And as our city has grown, we really have a lot of places, whether it be on Prospect, now Carl at the Fields, South Neal Street, and you have Prospect where, and downtown. And so figuring out how to get the community to continue to be aware of all the places that they can visit, all the events that they could be a part of, is a task, but a task that I think that you balance very well. And so, of course, the things that we've, you know, I always talk about diversity. But I think that more so, tonight, my comments are directed more so at thanking you for the work you've done. Congratulations on 10 years, as well as your staff, because I know that they work tirelessly and hard as well. But continuing to work on that mission of getting our everyday residents to see them in the different spaces that we have available. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bruno?
You know, I think that the money that the city invests directly and indirectly into travel and tourism promotion, largely through the VCC, is such a good investment, and it pays us great dividends. I'm struck by, you know, when we have a visiting family to our community, and they decide they're going to spend time shopping at the mall, that not only you could very superficially look at some direct benefit to the city of the sales tax, perhaps, that is generated. But what about all the people whose livelihoods, whose jobs are involved in retailing, that have a boost in their business? The clerks, the store owners, the people who mop the floors. All of that industry gets a direct benefit when we bring in visitors. In the hotel-motel industry, it's, you know, extremely direct. You can measure the people who have to clean and make the rooms and serve the breakfast. But that money comes back so many times over that it's just a great investment for our community to make to encourage tourism. And we have such an opportunity. If you think about the intersection of three interstate roads, and imagine what's 100 miles every direction from us, then we're the gem. You know, you may be driving a 300-mile journey, but you're not going to stay 30 miles from here. You're going to stay here. You're going to stay here. And the synergistic effect of having a collection of hotels and motels and restaurants, it becomes, this is the spot I'm going to pull off, and I'll decide between these 20 different lodging places or these 100 different restaurants, as opposed to a few exits down where you might have a much more limited choice. So I really think we make a great investment for the taxpayers of Champaign County when we support travel and tourism promotion, and I thank you for the good job you're doing.
Councilmember McGlady?
I thank you for the work VCC does as well. I think it's a good nexus for marketing and promotion for our community, you know, Champaign, of course, and also the greater Champaign County area. And I like the activity on the social media feeds that Visit Champaign County has. I also, I'm just looking here, I'm scrolling through the calendar page on the visitchampagnecounty.org website, and you have to scroll and scroll and scroll just to get through events that take us through this Saturday, which I think is quite heartening. And what I find interesting, too, is, you know, a lot of these events that are promoted are sort of local, homegrown events. I mean, you know, some of them are obviously sports events here that have to happen here, but, you know, there's things going on all over the community that, you know, folks here have created and folks here are doing. And those, I think, are particularly nice to see promoted, along with the big events that different entities, including VCC, have worked on bringing here. So I like the fact that, you know, we have a lot going on, and, big and small. And so, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Rex?
I just want to thank you for all the work that you do and your staff. I am always so impressed every time we have a board meeting of all the people that you're talking with and looking forward and trying to figure out what's the next thing that's coming here. And even looking at the Yards Project down the road, you're already reaching out to people with curling and with other things to try to bring new events to our community. And I love that about Visit Champaign County. And I think it's important for our community, not only to bring visitors here, but you do a great job at promoting different businesses, restaurants, events, parks, every, you know, our assets that are in our local community that we may not even think about. And I think it's a benefit for those who visit here. Maybe it's someone who moves here in the future or who starts a business here in the future. I think it's a benefit to the residents who live here because it gives us an opportunity to try different things. I know I was looking for something fun to do with my nephew one weekend, and we went to the pumpkin chunkin'. And the funnel cakes were definitely a hit there, and he was inspired. There were kids that were also launching pumpkins, and he wondered why he couldn't do that. So maybe he'll be a future pumpkin chunker, I don't know. But it was a fun event, and it was something different that I wouldn't have probably noticed had it not been for all the promotion that VCC does. Another thing I think to consider is that the city brings in revenue, but it doesn't generate revenue. And so I think the things that VCC does and partnering with organizations like VCC and EDC are really important to do, because when you have a return for every dollar that we spend on VCC and have a $9 return, I think that's significant. And it allows us to be able to do other things within the community and to benefit the community and the residents and the people who live here and work here, and I think that's important. And I think, too, that as we move forward with the expansion of the iHotel Conference Center, with the potential Yards Project, I think your role is going to be even more significant in bringing in different types of conferences and things that we've never been able to touch before. So again, thank you so much for your work and for everything you do, and I really look forward to seeing what you guys do in the future. Thanks.
Anyone else? I just want to take a minute. Thank you, Rob, for letting us in on the 10-year secret. And maybe I'm showing my age, but I remember what this organization was prior to you being here. And all of the things that we are thanking you for accomplishing in this last year are really things that over the last 10 years that you have built from, I don't know why I'm trying to be careful. The organization was lacking, to say the least, and was not driving the kind of destination tourism that we're talking about now. And you have an amazing staff that you have assembled, but you have done a tremendous amount of work, and your board is very active. We're really lucky to have this vibrant organization in our community helping to, you know, market who we are. And it's important, not only for the tourism, but also for retention and attraction of, you know, business and talent. So thank you for the work that you're doing. With that, we have a poll just to have our staff continue to work with you on your work plan. So I'll start with Angie.
Yes.
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 And yes, you have direction. Thank you. And Deputy City Manager, are you introducing this one, or are we turning it over to Tim or Bruce?
I'll introduce this one.
Okay.
We have Tim Bannon from Willard Airport and Bruce Knight, our Planning and Development Director, here to talk about Willard Airport and an update on their activities.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening. Just wanted to do a little brief introduction before I turn this over to Tim. Back in 2014, the chancellor put together a community group to look at the airport and identify strategies to try and improve the level and quality of service there. Frankly, it was just kind of sliding along at a mediocre level, and it was really time to try and ramp that up. And Carly McCrory is here from the Economic Development Corporation. She can tell you that when we go out and do business outreach visits in the community, airport service was one of the most frequent concerns we heard. The airport is critical to the city's economic development from a direct standpoint, but as you can see from the attachment regarding tax revenues generated by the travelers that come in and out of the airport, we also benefit financially in a very direct way as well. And so a strategic business plan was put together that was presented to council way back in April of 2015. We thought it was time to come back and update you on the progress that's been made since that time. There's been a significant amount of work done, starting with the creation of an executive director position to run the operation at the airport. Gene Kosse was the first executive director hired. He hired Tim Bannon as the director of operations. And when Gene moved on, there was a national search done, and it was very obvious that Tim was the right candidate to move up into the executive director seat. So I'm happy to have Tim here. I'm going to turn this over to him and let him walk you through everything that's going on at the airport, and we can answer questions at the end.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the introduction and really happy to be here and present to you today. So like Bruce said, been here for a couple of years, for about a year and a half in a different role as Director of Operations and Maintenance at Willard Airport, and since June of 2019 as the Director of the Airport. So very happy to be here. My wife and I are from Manteno, Illinois, so we have arrived home after a tour of the country at numerous other commercial airports. So again, really happy to be here at CMI and at the University of Illinois, Willard Airport. So I'd like to start with just a current overview of our operations. We have 22 full-time staff members right now at Willard Airport and the university. We just completed a study in 2019 through Volair Aviation, our consultants, that took a look at our economic impact annually, and it has increased by about 34% from the previous study done in 2016, up to $99 million annually. So that's really big. Air service, we have a total of 16 flights per day. We have a very successful fixed base operator at the airport, Flightstar, who has a maintenance, repair, and overhaul facility that services both general aviation and airline aircraft, both during the day and overnight hours. They also store fuel, aircraft storage, pump fuel, charter operations, in support of the university, sports activities, amongst other things. Also, we have an Institute of Aviation that was previously owned and operated by the University of Illinois. That program is now operated by Parkland. Very successful program as it ramps up here, 80 full-time students, approximately 15 instructors, and 20 aircraft are running right now. So the program is really taking hold. There's a high demand for flight training with the existing pilot shortage that's in the airlines today. So I'll touch base on that in a future slide. So Willard Airport priorities. Our number-one priority will be, and always will be, air service development concerning new routes and airlines, as Bruce mentioned. That is a focus that is really the lifeblood of our airport, and without successful air service, not only will our community suffer, but also the airport will. So that is a constant focus that we put a lot of resources into and consistently meet with airlines on a regular basis to pitch the airport, share data, and say, hey, we're open for business, and you should come fly at our airport. We have the demand for it. We have a strategic business plan that's shaping up, and it'll be completed in 2020. That's ongoing right now. We also have a master plan that is being conducted by Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, and that should be completed in 2020, which takes a look at the whole airport and determines a 20-year plan looking forward. We're also in a heavy pursuit of grant monies through the FAA and Illinois Department of Transportation. That is a huge source of revenue for us when it comes to capital projects, and we are constantly applying for those grants to build runways, taxiways, facilities, and we're going to continue to take advantage of that. Long-term airport governance is always important to talk about. Currently being owned and operated by the university, eventually, you know, that needs to be looked at. And it really, the airport really is a community asset, and that's something that we need to, in the long term, look at. Also, non-aeronautical revenue development continues to be a priority. Right now, we do a really great job with airlines. We have some successful rental car companies. We have Flightstar. Airports generally continue to develop revenue through non-aeronautical sources, so we don't put more burden on the airlines and the aeronautical people and businesses. We try and find tenants that may not be tied to aeronautical activities. So that's something we're going to be looking at in the future.
And just before we leave this page, I should note that Willard Airport is the only commercial airport in the state that is not owned and operated by an airport authority. So that is a real disadvantage that we have to work to overcome.
Sure. Thank you. So air service demand is really high. 20% of the passengers that fly out of our area use Willard Airport. The other 80% drive to other airports to fly out of other airports. There's a lot of reasons for that. Most of our leakage goes to O'Hare, Indianapolis, and Midway. About 10% of it, the remaining, goes to Bloomington, Peoria, Springfield, and St. Louis combined. So right now, we accommodate about 109,000 employments per year, and there's about 500,000 people flying out of our area. They just drive to their airport and fly out of the airports listed here. So we really have a demand to continue to expand air service at the airport, and this is a really important thing to note. Many airports do not have this level of demand, and we're lucky to be one of them that does. So that's something we need to continue to leverage and build upon in the future as we pitch our airport to airlines. Why do other people fly elsewhere? Available seats? So we're 80% load factor. We have 140,000 seats available to get on every year, and we fill about 110,000 currently, and that puts us at about 80% load factor. And that's a really critical point, a successful point for the airlines. Direct flights? People want direct flights. Available destinations and traveling nonstop. So more routes and more destinations that we have, the more successful we'll be. And also, available seats is one of the biggest drivers. Right now, if all the additional people in the Champaign area were to say, hey, we want to fly at a Willard Airport, we cannot accommodate them currently. We do not have that number of seats in our market currently. So that's an important note to make. Another thing just to touch base on in the previous slide is our airline performance, just really quickly, is growing. So in calendar year of 2016, we handled about 93,000 passengers. 2017, 100,000 passengers. 2018, 109,000 passengers. So we've had growth year over year since 2016. That's an important thing to mention as we, not only to the community and show our value to the community, but also to airlines as we say, hey, look, we have demand here, and we need to continue to add flights and additional routes. Air service development, as previously mentioned, is a really big priority for us. The first thing starts with community support. We are really the liaison to the community at the airport when we go and meet with the airlines. Every airport wants airlines, and the story is always good as we, throughout the industry, pitched to airlines, hey, you should fly at our airport. So what we do is we take data, and we create really good information packets for the airlines to say, hey, we have demand here, you should fly these routes, look at where people are traveling. And we have that data through the Department of Transportation. Another thing we do is apply to the Small Community Air Service Development Grant through Department of Transportation. We have applied for this for $750,000 grant to support the airport. We have not heard word yet if we have been awarded. There's been about $37 million in applications, and $12 million will be awarded. So we have a pretty decent chance at landing one of those, and we have been a recipient in the past. We also offer incentive packages, revenue guarantees, competitive rates and charges, and we offer a marketing strategy for the airlines as well. Our existing carrier, American Airlines, we are always encouraging them to add additional flight frequency. Over time, the Embraer 140, 145 aircraft will be phased out of their fleet mix up to the 70-seat Embraer 170-class aircraft. So that may, we hope, that they keep the existing frequency of our flights to O'Hare and Dallas, and obviously Charlotte, at being at once a day. And we'll gain additional seats in our market if they simply upgauge the existing aircraft and fly the existing frequency. So that's really what we hope they do. And that's an industry trend throughout all airlines that fly regional jets. It's just becoming more cost economical. It doesn't cost too much more to operate a 70-seater instead of a 50-seater, but they have an additional 20 seats to sell. So it's something that's going on throughout the industry, and hopefully, we will be a benefit of that as these aircraft grow in size. We are always in new airline recruitment. We've had some successful meetings with Allegiant. There's no formal or firm commitment to come and serve our market, but we've offered them a competitive incentive package, marketing pledge, rates and charges. We've even offered ground handling reimbursement as one of our incentives. Potential destinations are the listed cities they're destined, Orlando, St. Petersburg, Punta Gorda, Fort Lauderdale, and maybe even a Las Vegas route, which would be great. SkyWest is another airline that we're actively pursuing to fly either an east or a west route to Denver or to Washington-Dulles. We do have high travel, or a high number of travel to the east and to the west, so we think they'd be a great airline to fit right into our existing mix of flights. So we're continuing to work on that. This company would likely be the airline that would serve us under a Small Community Air Service Development Grant. Pilot shortage is currently a pretty big issue throughout the entire country. So today, it's not really impacting things too bad, but over the next few years, things are going to get a lot worse. The retirement rates, mandatory retirement for pilots, more pilots are retiring than coming into the industry. So in 2019, we'll lose 1,900 pilots. 2023, it'll be up to 8,600, and by 2026, we'll be 15,000 pilots short than we are today, if the continuing trend exists. This pilot shortage could affect approximately 1,800 aircraft. You need 8.3 pilots. I don't know where the .3 comes in, but 8.3 pilots to fly an aircraft full-time. So as pilot shortage continues, those pilots will get pulled up to the main lines, and airports our size may suffer from that. So we hope that this trend reverses, and that's why our partnership with Parkland College to continue operating this flight program is really important, to funnel pilots into the aviation system and to get people to fly airplanes, really important. So community involvement and support. We have monthly executive committee meetings, which was established by a task force back in 2015. Quarterly advisory committees, same thing. We do a lot of community presentations. We have a Fly Local campaign. We obviously take advantage of the platform of the University of Illinois, being owned and operated by the university. And we offer a semi-annual community newsletter. And we offer a semi-annual community newsletter. If you'd like to sign up for that, please see me and I'd be happy to take your email and send it out to you twice a year. We don't bother you more than that, but we like to update key community members and different projects and initiatives that we have at the airport. And it's a really great resource and that's something that's generally new. I think we're two additions in, so we're coming up on our third. We also do social media promotions to continue to drive engagement with the University of Illinois Willard Airport and ticket giveaways to Cranner, to basketball games, to football games, and those seem to be really popular. Customs and Border Protection, general aviation facility is currently underway. That is a up-to-date picture as of yesterday. So that's a new facility that Flightstar, our fixed-based operator, is building and paying to operate. It is a user-fee station, meaning that aircraft paid to operate at that facility and get cleared by the Customs and Border Protection. It'll also, it will offer international capabilities, only to general aviation at this time. We'll also have global entry and pre-check enrollment. We anticipate that the CBP will have office hours on a regular basis to have an open door that building will be accessible to the public where you can come in and get enrolled in global entry and pre-check. We've held a few different events over this past year for one global entry, two pre-check. They've been very successful. All of them have booked up completely. So there's a high demand, again, for travel in our area and we're here to support that and this building will definitely be a great addition. Anticipated operational in early 2020. So we have some projects coming up. Something that was supposed to be completed this year was to rehabilitate our terminal entrance road. And there's going to be a diagram on the next page, which we can go over as well. So that's been postponed due to weather and some letting issues through IDOT. So we will tackle that at the beginning of 2020. So that's going to be a really great project for us. In addition to that, not listed, we're redoing all of our airport entrance signage to resurface and re-letter all of our signage and really improve the look of the airport. So that'll be great. We're reconstructing a taxiway that has some non-standard geometry from the FAA. That's Taxiway Alpha Five. That's a $4 million project that's going to be happening in 2020. We're updating signage lighting and underground wiring on numerous air carrier taxiways. That'll happen in 2020 as well. We are fully reconstructing Runway 422, which was a $9.9 million FAA grant. So at the end of the day, that'll be about a $15 million project. Reconfigure another non-standard geometry issue, Taxiway Echo and Taxiway Alpha, and we'll resurface that and Terminal Entrance Road Phase Three. So all in all, it's actually a little bit more than $20 million in projects that are going to be happening at the airport over the next two years. It'll be a very busy place. So there's an update on that. The next kind of diagram here shows where the airport projects are taking place. So our airfield's going to be very, very busy over the next couple of years. And we also have, after those projects previously listed, we have some additional asks with the FAA and IDOT that are big-ticket items, such as terminal rehabilitation, building a new fire department, procuring a new fire truck, which is close to a million dollars. So just those three right there would be about another $20 million. So we hope that we can position ourselves with the FAA and IDOT to get that money, but that is not a guarantee yet at all. So we are pursuing that and they program that money a couple of years out. So we're still a couple of years away from that. So moving forward, our airport master plan, as previously mentioned, that'll wrap up this year. We're going to be preparing for the next 20 years. That'll include a financial feasibility for all the great things we'd like to do at the airport. We need to understand how we're going to pay for those things. So that is also going to be looked at. We need a terminal rehabilitation. It is 30 years old. It was built in 1988, I believe. Our TSA checkpoint is currently undersized, so that needs to be relocated and expanded, even at existing levels. And we anticipate that being completed this upcoming year in 2020. So economic impact study, this is something touched base on earlier. Previously in 2016, our economic impact in the area was, or I'm sorry, in Champaign County was 74.3 million. It is now at $99 million annually. And that includes direct, indirect and induced economic impacts, meaning when the money is spent and made, spent and spent again in the community. It's also, this was a great forecasting tool to look at what a flight, let's say to Washington Dulles, would look like. You may have seen a newspaper article that says airport gearing up to add flights. So that was a creative article. It kind of made it sound like we're on the edge of getting that flight. We're really not. We just wanted to put that in here to look at what that would mean for our community in terms of new visitors and economic impact generated as a result of those airline seats being added to our market, which is a very big impact.
Of course, it is true that the 2016 studies looked at the Charlotte route, correct?
Sure did. Yes. And that was added. So maybe that's a good thing that it was in here. So we'll hopefully build on that and add another route. So the airport, the airport's really a community asset, as we previously discussed, even though it's owned and operated by the university. We really are here for the community and wouldn't be successful without the community. So the impact of each additional seat would result in approximately $82,000 annually. So if you had one flight per day, 50 seats, it's a pretty big impact. So the airport's really critical to the local economy and then these airline seats are very valuable. And airports across the country are fighting for them. So if it's not us, it's being added somewhere else. So we really want to be in a great position to have our existing airline expand, but also to bring in new airlines. That's very important. That's going to be our top priority over the next few years. So our strategic plan in 2014, some accomplishments. Bruce mentioned hiring an executive director, establishing an executive and advisory committee that works with the airport to guide the priorities of the airport and to have community involved at the airport. That's very important. We updated our parking system to go fully automated, which was a successful project. Airport rebranding is continually going, I guess, but it has been redone with the iFlyCU and enhanced marketing efforts. We have a director of marketing now and her full-time focus is to make our airport visible to the public and to stay engaged and promote, obviously, our airlines as well. So that's been very successful. Hiring Ashley has been great and she's really done a great job supporting the airport, so. Ongoing action items, master plan, new rental car service center. So we've implemented a customer facility charge. We have $3 per rental car per day that we collect. That's a fee and that is currently building up a pot of money that we can use to build a new consolidated rental car return and processing facility right by where the existing rental cars are. Currently, we have kind of this open-air facility that's pretty basic. We need to build a new facility to support our rental cars so that there's a quick turn on those rental cars and get them back to rentable status. And also, in the wintertime, being open-air today, we can't process rental cars in the winter. So we'd really like to improve that at the airport. It is a big part of our business, so we want to improve that for the rental cars. So that is an upcoming project. We're going to be working with capital projects that facilities and services the university to accomplish that. And there is a funding source, which is great. New air traffic control tower. We did the site work for it a few years back. There is still a small pot of money there that the FAA has not taken back yet, so we're hopeful that we're still in the plans. However, towers are very expensive to build and from what I heard through the grapevine, we're probably number 20 on the tower list and there's two built a year. So that's how far we're away right now. So technologies may change in the future and whether we'll need a new tower or not, we'll see. But there are kind of emerging technologies that allow advanced camera systems to serve in the place of a tower. So we'll see how that all goes. But for now, we have some FAA money in our fund balances and that's restricted, of course, can't spend it. But hopefully, they restart the discussion with us. But in the meantime, we continue to have our tower built in the 1960s. And for now, it works, but in the future, we do need something to replace it. Strategic plan in 2019 is underway. We've just completed a SWOT analysis with our consultants. Valer Aviation Consulting is doing this as well. Previously, Sixl Consulting did our previous action item list through a strategic plan in 2015. Sixl, a lot of the leadership at Valer came from Sixl. Sixl dissolved in the majority and that's why we're working with Valer. So Jack Penning is one of the partners and he was previously with the airport with Sixl. So we've had a pretty long tenure with our existing consultants that help us strategize and how we move forward. So we're looking at recruiting scheduled air service, air cargo, increasing revenue, increasing general aviation attractiveness in the community. We're looking to host, hopefully, some fly-ins, maybe through AOPA, which would be fantastic. Attract aviation businesses and potential solar development, which would be really great for us. We have plenty of land out there and that would be a great thing to do is put in some solar, not only to support sustainability, but also potentially generate revenue through solar farming. So best management practices and maximize operations, that's always an ongoing effort to make sure we're operating as efficient as possible and maximizing the return on investment we get when we spend our money and build new infrastructure and invest in airline recruitment and such. So that's a very brief overview of the airport. Again, I'm really happy to be here to represent the airport. We've made a lot of progress over the last few years. We have a very dedicated and talented staff at the airport and it wouldn't be possible without them, so I want to thank them really quick. Although our staff is small, I think they're really, they really do an excellent job at representing the airport and continuing to strategize and grow the airport. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any technical questions, Councilmember Gladney?
Thank you. Add a couple. So you talked about how you have 16 flights a day, correct? Can you just tell me, what's the time for those, like for the operate from when to when?
Yeah, the first departure is soon going to be at about 5:15 in the morning to Charlotte and then the last arrival is, I think, somewhere around 9:00 PM. So it's a pretty long window of operations at the airport. But our initial push is the on-time performance for our early morning flights is always really great because the airlines, we have four aircraft overnight that get worked on with Flightstar. They go to their airline division. They can do everything from basic checks all the way to engine changes in one night. So that's really impressive. They get them back at the gate, ready to go, and we have a really successful first push. Usually when we take a delay, it's due to weather elsewhere. Our runways are open and operational and our planes are ready to go. So that's a big benefit. But yeah, it's a pretty long window and the airlines have to staff that all day. So it's a long day for some people.
Okay. Is that a pretty typical schedule then for an airport our size?
Yes.
And the other question I had, and please forgive my ignorance, I haven't flown since 1991, so I don't know about such things here, but the international thing here, the Customs and Border Protection facility, what exactly happens there? What is that? I mean, you listed these things, but I didn't quite gel with me about that.
Sure. The Customs and Border Protection facility is currently located in Decatur. So when an aircraft comes in internationally, destination is CMI. They have to stop somewhere else to get pre-cleared through customs, make sure that the aircraft doesn't have any, let's say, prohibited items on it, to make sure all the passengers have passports. The CBP checks all those things and then usually, like if someone goes to Decatur, they get off, everybody has to get off the plane, get checked, get back on the plane, restart the engines, take back off and fly here. The Decatur station's getting shut down and it's getting relocated to CMI. And that's a really big benefit for existing operations is corporate travelers will now be able to fly directly into CMI and get processed instead of having to stop somewhere else. So it's a lot more efficient. We also have now, with that, we can attract maybe, hopefully, more businesses to come here and say, if you have international travel, we can process you here direct. You don't have to stop at Indy or Chicago or Decatur anymore. You can come straight here. And for our size airport, that's really fantastic. Flightstar's a big business partner in that.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other technical? Councilmember Bricks.
You indicated that it's, our current airport is owned by the university and not from an airport authority. What is the significance of that? What does that mean exactly?
Well, an airport authority, when that, when an airport authority runs an airport, their sole mission is to run an airport. So when we answer to a board of people, either elected or appointed to serve on that board, the direction of the airport is guided by that, by that authority exclusively for the benefit of the airport. So obviously, the university is a very big place and so the airport is owned and operated by the university, but we really don't have that. But we do, I mean, through the executive and advisory committee, we do have that today, but it's not a governance. It's an advisory in nature. So long-term, an airport authority that's exclusively there to run the airport be beneficial because those community members that we're responsible to would be directing on the board. Additionally, funding is also a big thing. Our regional competitors, such as Bloomington, Peoria, Springfield, are supported by tax dollars that are levied on real estate. We don't have that, so our operating costs are higher. So when we try and recruit airlines, we don't have all of our bills covered already. We have to charge the airlines a fair market value for the space that they operate in. So Springfield, Peoria, Bloomington, they can make it very, very cheap for airlines to operate, where we have to charge a fair market value to recover our costs to operate. So that makes it a little bit more expensive on the airlines. And when we're competing for, let's say, an airline like Allegiant, we really, from a cost per employment, which is a measure that we use, we're at about $6 per employment it would cost them if they flew two flights, two flights a week, where the cost per employment at Bloomington might be more like a dollar. So that's a pretty big margin when you're flying, you know, say, 50,000 people in a year. That can mean a big difference between loss or profit. So ultimately, it's all related and funding is definitely really important and that would be the benefit of an airport authority.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Bruno.
One of your slides said you have 22 full-time staff. Those are staff that work for the airport?
Correct. Yeah, University of Illinois staff, but exclusively dedicated to the airport's operation.
So the number 22 doesn't count the full-time employees of American, of the airline?
Correct.
Or Flightstar's full-time employees?
Correct. Yeah, there's over 100.
Or the employees of the rental, the automobile rental booths. 22 is just working for the airport.
Just the, yeah, just the Willard Airport staff that support administrative operations, building service workers, administrative staff and maintenance as well.
Can you talk about the ability of a regional jet, like the ones that serve our airport, about their ability to take off in foggy weather?
That doesn't really impact us much here. We do have an ILS, an instrument landing system that on Runway 32 right, so even in inclement weather, airlines can operate pretty easily in and out of our airport.
What I was hoping you'd do there, Tim, is make a distinction between takeoff and landing. Is it easier and safer to take off in bad weather than to land in bad weather?
Yeah, landing is obviously a little bit more risky in inclement weather. Takeoff is a little bit easier.
So if you got the planes on the ground, sleeping at our airport overnight, and you wake up in the morning and it's foggy, they can take off?
Yes. Yeah, you need almost zero-zero conditions to prevent a takeoff.
And are you familiar with any statistics that compare flight in fog to driving on an interstate highway in an automobile in the fog?
No, I do not.
Can you speculate as to which is a more dangerous operation?
Driving in the fog is more dangerous.
That's all my technical questions.
Councilmember Stock.
Couple of questions. How do we compare, like, I guess in terms of flights, but airlines and so forth, to other downstate Illinois airports like a Peoria or a Bloomington or something like that?
We have a good mix of air service for our size airport. We're the only area in the state that's currently growing in population, so that's something excellent that we use to pitch to the airlines to continue to grow. Our biggest handicap is that we aren't funded in a way that other airports are. So like I was saying earlier, we're attracting airlines, they have to make a decision, Allegiant has to make a decision, do they come into our airport and start new or do they expand in an existing airport and just count on people to drive over? So from air service-wise, other airports in our region do have a better mix of airlines, but from a service perspective, you know, we do really well. 109,000 employments this past calendar year puts us competitive with all of our regional airports. Peoria's a little bit bigger. Bloomington is comparable, Springfield's comparable.
I would just note that when we first started this effort, there was a pretty wide community narrative that everybody went to Bloomington Normal to fly. Free parking. It's all about free parking. Everyone went to Bloomington Normal. And I think both the 2016 study and the most recent study indicate that a very small percentage of our leakage goes to the Central Illinois Airport. So we're very competitive and I think a lot of the changes that have been put in place, the leadership that's been put in place is a big reason for that.
And then my second question, kind of you sort of did my segue for. What would it look like to get away from the U of A, to go into more of an airport authority model compared to where we are now?
I mean, what would the process be for that? That would have to be in... That would have to be within legislation within the state of Illinois. That's how the other airport authorities were created. There are airports across the state that are looking to either A, establish an airport authority, or B, expand their airport authority. So we would likely be on one of those pieces of legislation to get that, get that pushed through. Lot of benefits, you know, for that and as, you know, Bruce mentioned, you know, we do charge for parking and 90% of our leakage is people driving to airports that charge more for parking. So it really, parking isn't really a primary factor when people decide to fly at Willard Airport or not fly at Willard Airport. It's more of a destination, routes and also available seats. That seems to be the primary driver.
I always suggest to people that would they rather pay for parking whether they were parking at the airport or not, or only pay for parking when they're using the airport? Because when you provide free parking at an airport and use tax dollars to replace those dollars, then everybody in the community is paying for that parking and they don't necessarily have to be using it.
Would the follow-up question to your answer, would the university be interest? I mean, are they, where are they at in the terms of separating and having an airport authority versus university?
I can't really answer that question, honestly.
I still don't know if those conversations had been had or...
Yeah, I don't know historically whether the university has wanted the airport or not, but my mission is to make the culture of our airport proudly owned and operated by the University of Illinois. And if someday where we ever go to an airport authority, I want the university to be sad to lose it because that's, it's that big of an asset. So that's my goal. I don't know what their current position is on it. I think they're very supportive of the airport personally. The support I get on a day-to-day basis from the chancellor's office is excellent and yeah, I think, I think they're going to support the operation of the airport as long as it continues to be owned by the university. I think it's very important. At the end of the day, they own and operate it and they, you know, I think they want to be proud of the airport and, and that's our goal.
So I think one of the challenges to an airport authority that would probably require some kind of a hybrid for us is that FAA would require the university to pay back all the grants they've gotten over the years if they were to dispose of the airport to another entity. So that's probably not practical, which means they'll probably continue to own it, but maybe we have some kind of a strategy for the community to help fund it more effectively.
Now probably, and to piggyback off of that, that would really be a transfer of grant assurances as well if it were to be owned by somebody else. You know, we've heard some feedback sometimes, why don't we just close the airport and bus everybody to Indianapolis or Chicago? Well, there's about $50 million we'd have to pay back to the FAA for all the money they've invested in our airport. So that's a good start as to why that's a terrible idea. But B, have you ever heard of a successful county or region that does not have an airport? A successful airport? We're really an economic hub and that's, and that's where we need to be, full-time and even grow.
Councilmember Beck, did you? No, you're just rubbing your eyes. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience wish to address this issue? Council comment? Councilmember Bruno?
I have a lot of observations. I consider myself just a rabid fan for Willard Airport. I think it's such a great community asset and so I have very, I have nothing I can think of negative to say about our airport, but I do want to point out some things that I hear in social settings that are just urban legends or mythology about Willard Airport. That's why I brought up the fog because we're really lucky to have a fixed base operator at Willard that works on airplanes so that the airline wants to park four of them at our airport every night. So in the morning, when you wake up and maybe there's bad weather, those planes can safely take off because they were here overnight and they're here overnight because of Flightstar and, and the great high-paying jobs that that provides for Flightstar employees. But if people just think rationally about putting the family in the station wagon and driving on a highway, how much, how dangerous that is in foggy, rainy, snowy, icy weather and how much safer it is if your journey starts on an air flight. The other observation I would make is whether you're traveling for leisure or for business, when you return home from a trip, the notion of going out to your car and starting it up and having a 50-mile drive home or a 110-mile drive home is just daunting and unpleasant. And whether you've been gone from, for two days or gone for two weeks, the beauty of coming back to Willard Airport after a trip, short or long, and being home in your living room 15 minutes later is a, just a priceless aspect of using Willard Airport. So then my friends at cocktail parties and the like will tell me, oh, you know, but the parking is free. And Bruce, you kind of stole my thunder on this, but the parking is free at Bloomington Normal. But I will point out that if you own a $240,000 home, which is maybe an above-average home, and it has an equalized assessed valuation of $80,000 and the tax rate for the Bloomington Airport Authority is .1366, that's $109 a year as a line item on your real estate tax bill. 109 per year for every household in the county in the, in the airport authority, which is all of Bloomington, all of Normal and several townships outside of Bloomington Normal. So they're paying $109 a year to park free. And yeah, an airport authority would be a great tool for us, but it's, it's a small bargain to pay, you know, the, the low price that we charge for parking. I will say that from, I think from the EDC and Alicia, you can back this up from the EDC, that having an airport in our community is a critical concern of all the commercial players in our community who we call upon to retain their business and to have them invest in the community. When Decatur lost their scheduled commercial air service and Danville used, decades ago had scheduled air carrier service, now you, how do you tell a corporate entity on the East Coast or the West Coast to invest in your county if you have to drive a car to get there? When, when you're, when the regional manager from Denver wants to come out and see the factory, that he can't land in the county or she can't land in the county is a tremendous ball and chain for economic development. So we really need to keep our airport open and thriving. But it's, it's a, it's a wonderful resource to have in our community. It provides a lot of good-paying jobs and it's a, and it's a real bargain. I understand, you know, there aren't, there's only a few, a handful, maybe two or three university-owned airports left in the United States, but we certainly get our value out of, out of Willard Airport and I thank you for the hard work you're doing to keep it vibrant. There was a time when we got down to so few flights that it looked like some bureaucrat at American Airlines could make a decision one morning and we could lose our air service. And now I think we're so robust and healthy that we've backed away from that cliff a little bit. And with flights to three different cities that are regularly full, we have a little bit more comfort margin that that's not going to go away. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Beck?
I just wanted to add on to one comment that Councilmember Bruno had. One of the things I think people don't realize is that Champaign County has a rich aerospace industry and the University of Illinois, of course, has a top aerospace program in the nation. And so we kind of need to have an airport that's going to be thriving. And it's a really important piece, not only for the reasons that you mentioned, but also to help to continue to promote that very rich industry and the programs that continue to spin off from, from the University of Illinois. So I look forward to seeing, you know, further growth. I've always thought it was pretty awesome that a community our size has an airport and that you can catch a flight and connect to anywhere in the world because we do have flights to major airports that go everywhere in the world. And, and certainly it's, it's just one added step, but you're taking a flight instead of taking your car, which is also another step you have to take. So there's no real added steps. It's just the mode that you take to get there. And certainly flying from a single destination rather than having to drive is, is a benefit. So looking forward to seeing the expansion of any routes that, you know, might come our way, of course, but hoping that people will continue to consider using Willard before thinking of other alternatives. So thank you for your presentation tonight and, and I look forward to seeing what comes.
Councilmember Stock.
Agreed. Thank you for, that was, that was really interesting. I would, I, and I'm glad to see that you are trying to sort of court some of the maybe kind of discount airlines like Allegiant because I've always sort of thought that if people, you know, were taking family vacation to St. Pete or something and flew out of Willard, then they might realize, boy, that sure was easy to fly out of Willard. And the next time we're going on a business trip, let's take, let's just do that and not drive to Chicago. So I think it's a good entryway maybe for people to kind of have the Willard experience that maybe have never had that experience before because they've just automatically gone to O'Hare or gone to Midway or gone to wherever. So thank you for that. I wasn't necessarily advocating for an airport authority, but it came up about three or four times, so it just kind of got me curious as, as in your presentation, so I thought I would ask some questions about that. But thank you though, I think, looks like things are really going in a real positive direction at the airport, which I'm really glad to see. So thank you for being here.
Vanna? Councilmember Pianfetti?
I just wanted to thank you for addressing the questions about why people would go to different airports. That was something that I was interested in and I know I had contacted Bruce, you earlier about the report, just to see if it was in there. I'm also interested, having a spouse that flies frequently to Washington to get that flight there because the times that he is stranded at O'Hare trying to get back home, I would love to see that flight. So I appreciate, as Councilwoman Beck said, to get additional flights or a different additional airlines would be appreciated. So thank you.
Councilmember Foreman?
Thank you for your presentation and I say this with all seriousness. What are the chances we could get Southwest Airlines? Now, hear me out, hear me out. We're talking tourism, right? Because we just had the VCC presentation and I, I don't, I don't know about other airlines. Like I'm not flying spirit, I'm not risking my life, right? But if I want to fly Southwest, I'm driving wherever Southwest is, right? And it's a big thing. So not just Southwest, but I mean, I would like to say this because I spoke Costco up, so I know if I throw Southwest into the air that it may come back to us. But I think you guys do a really good job of what you have, only because I deal with so many people and I schedule travel for so many people and I see how much you have available, how well the connecting flights are, and I think you guys do a really good job of that. I wish more people knew about the airport and how much it brought in. Something really interesting, someone actually texted me while you were talking to tell me how important that the change from Decatur to Champaign is, how much it impacts people. And he happens to be a business owner in Decatur who moved his business to Decatur because of this particular, being able to have this border and patrol protections or whatever it is. And he's like, what, oh my God, am I going to have to move to Champaign because it was such a big part? And so those kind of conversations of like what businesses will be impacted and how that will happen is really interesting to me. So I really appreciate you for bringing that up and I'm just going to shout out Southwest again because they're into the air, the university bring it back. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you for your presentation. I actually today was asked about the economic impact of the airport and because I had read my packet, was able to tell them that it's, you know, $90 million, which is pretty amazing. But I think the, the thing that really stuck out to me was that 82,000 for one, one additional seat is that, I mean, when you look at what, what the airport is doing for our local economy and, you know, Councilmember Bruno's comment about it's not, it's not just the pilots or the stewardess or the, or my neighbor who checks you in at airlines. It really is about everybody who, who touches the airport and we really, really appreciate what you're doing. So we're supposed to direct staff, well, you, if you vote yes, you're directing staff to continue to support community efforts to improve air service at the airport, including serving on the executive committee, attending the quarterly advisory committee meetings and promoting the Fly Local campaign for the airport. Councilmember Stock?
Yes.
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 And yes, you have direction. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
We are now at the point for general audience participation on any topic. If anyone wants to address the council, seeing none, council comments. Councilmember Foreman?
Over the weekend with the recent string of shootings we had, I got a lot of phone calls and I've had a couple of conversations with Councilmember Kyle about, you know, liquor licenses and how that happens. And I just want to remind the public that, you know, the mayor's office and the liquor commissioner, you know, has control over what happens with liquor licenses. And she's talked about it before and spoke about how, you know, we cannot deny a person a liquor license or to operate a business because we think of what might happen or, you know, you know, in the community, you see things, you think, oh, this isn't good, this may not happen. And so I just want to have the conversation of, you know, if we're going to visit businesses and we're going to, we're going to be there, we all have to be responsible for our behavior while we're there. And if you're loitering and you're hanging out in parking lots in front of businesses with no intent to shop at that business or do something there, you know, we start to put that onus on the community to be responsible for other people's behavior. And so I just really felt the need to say that because I was so surprised by how many people were upset about, you know, oh my God, this business and nobody talks about, oh my gosh, your behavior. You know, why would you loiter? And it's a constant problem at multiple places. It's, and you know, when I was talking to Councilmember Kyle about this conversation, it wasn't just, we couldn't pick one business in one area, we can't pick one place in Champaign or Savoy or Urbana. It's, it's a, it's a thing across the community and how do we have that conversation? And, you know, myself and Councilmember Kyle and Councilmember Gladney, for a minute we had to pass ships because of the Open Meetings Act, but we went to the community response to gun violence event tonight and to hear the community talking about different things they're trying to do and how they want to be involved in that is a conversation that has to constantly keep happening and the onus is, you know, on us as a community to start to step up to do that because, you know, when I got on council, I thought, you know, the answer is more police. That is not the answer. The answer is not more police and more law enforcement and more visits to the courthouse, I guess is how I'll say that. The answer is, you know, to take ownership in our neighborhoods and our community and to handle that and support those business owners. If you see people loitering, you see kids, you know, talk to them. You know, I've had really good success, I think Councilmember Kyle will tell you too, we've all had good success being like, what are you doing? Why are you standing out there? Talk to the kids, engage them, find out what's going on, talk to the youth. And because I'm, we know it's not unemployment, our unemployment rate is pretty low. So I just, you know, want to have that conversation or say that out loud because as much as I want to believe that it's, you know, where a business opens or how a business opens, I think that it has more to do with, you know, how we visit that business, what are we doing, you know, how are we as a community doing things? And so I just want to say that. And also I'm really proud of how the community came out tonight to sit down and have a conversation, not just, the, the different crowd of people that were there was really surprising. I mean, you found people from complete different opposite spectrums who wanted to sit down and have that conversation. And Unit 4 was there and talking about schools. And so I just think it's really important to constantly have that conversation and I want to shout out to our city staff and Tracy Parsons and Mary Catherine because they really are working really hard in the community and everybody doesn't always get to see those collaborations. But the work is happening and some of these things happen and people think, oh man, all the hard work we've done has been wiped away. And that's not true. All the hard work is continuing. All the initiatives that the city is working on and working with other partners is happening and we cannot stop and let these kind of things happen, stop the momentum of what we're doing. Because overall picture is to make the community safe, no matter what neighborhood you're in, no matter what business that you're visiting. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just, I've got my LED. Today we celebrated Nick Hollenack Yak, sorry, who invented the LED and who is the honorary grand marshal for the Parade of Lights. And this is just my reminder that this weekend is... And this is just my reminder that this weekend is Shop Small, which means you should patronize your local businesses, but also come downtown on Saturday to enjoy this amazing fun event. And, you know, you will have a great time and you'll get to see lots of floats that are decorated with the LED that was discovered right here at the University of Illinois. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.